Good evening. The League of Women Voters of Laramie County would like to welcome you to this forum of the primary candidates for Laramie County Commissioner, Districts Two and Three. I'm Carrie Bennett. I'm a volunteer with the League of Women Voters, and I will serve as your moderator for this evening's event. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. We do not endorse any candidate or party. Our hope for tonight is to help voters learn more about the candidates for county commissioner so that they can make the best choices for their own values and priorities in the primary election this June. County commissioners are elected to four-year terms and are tasked with making very difficult decisions that directly impact the lives of Laramie County residents. Commissioners' responsibilities range from adopting the county budget, declaring county emergencies, providing human services, land use and zoning in unincorporated areas, developing and implementing county policy, and more. County commissioners are compensated for their service. Before we learn about the format for tonight and meet the candidates, I want to thank the staff from the city of Fort Collins for providing technical magic that is hosting and recording tonight's forum. The recording of the forum will be broadcast on SCTV and shared online. The city has always been a strong supporter of the League's voter education efforts, and we appreciate their support even more now as we move into this virtual platform. We apologize in advance for any technical glitches. Anyone who has been using these video conferencing services over the last three months knows that even with the best laid of plans, you can still have stumbling blocks. We are hopeful that everything will go smoothly tonight, and we are extremely grateful for all of the behind-the-scenes work that will make this possible. We're going to begin tonight by giving each of the candidates 90 seconds to introduce themselves. After this, we will begin with questions. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. We will rotate who answers first throughout the night. At the end of the evening, candidates will again have one minute to make a closing statement. These closing statements will be delivered in reverse order from how we did the introductions. At the very end, I will provide some general information about the primary election. We've organized the candidates by district and then alphabetically by last name for tonight's forum. Although candidates must live within the geographic bounds of their district, they're selected by the entire county. During the primary election, you will choose from the candidate from your own political party in each district. Remember that registered independents will receive ballots for both parties and will decide which ballot to complete for the primary election. Now, let's begin. Our first candidate for District Two is Jeff Jensen. Jeff, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Thank you so much for your introduction, Carrie. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. In our little bit of space that we had in the front, you asked us to warn people about what might happen in our background, and this is Cookie, and so she's going to make herself known, and she's not running for office, she's just moral support. So, my name is Jeff Jensen. I am running for Laramie County Commissioner, District Two. My background is, I've been building businesses and fixing them for 35 years. I am a business consultant. I help people build their dreams, their dreams of entrepreneurship, their dreams of making things better for themselves. I've been on the Planning Commission now for 10 years. The three county commissioners, Steve Johnson, Tom Donnelly, and Lou Gator at the time, appointed me to that commission. I just was reappointed last year, and so Steve Johnson, Tom Donnelly, and John Kafalas appointed me for my current commission. I've been working on the comprehensive plan for about three and a half years. We adopted that last July, and that's our 20-year vision for Laramie County is we look forward as to who we want to be when we grow up or when we want to see what we're doing in the future. I appreciate this time. I look forward to answering your questions. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming tonight.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Our next candidate for District Two is Bob McCleskey.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. I'm Bob McCleskey. I want to thank the League for putting on the forum tonight. I also, on a personal note, want to thank all the people on the front lines fighting the coronavirus. It's a very important time. We appreciate the work they do. When I first started the campaign, I was talking about creating better jobs for people in Laramie County, keeping taxes low, protecting our natural resources and private property rights, fixing the transportation system, standing up to Denver politicians, making sure that veterans have more services, and finding a way to have more affordable childcare in Laramie County. Now, things are different. Some things are still the same. Coming out of this, we still need to find more good-paying jobs for residents of Laramie County, and we still need to stand up to the politicians in Denver to make sure that we don't get unfunded mandates coming to us. We have to remember to try and keep Laramie local, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Bob. We appreciate it. And our last candidate in District Two is Kristin Stevens. Go ahead, Kristin.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you to the League for sponsoring this unconventional forum that we have tonight. My name's Kristin Stevens, and I have lived in Laramie County for the past 30 years and have raised my three children here. I currently serve on the Fort Collins City Council, have served there for five years, and in the past year I was elected as mayor pro temp of the city. So, I also serve as Chair of the Pooter Fire Authority. I serve on national committees, like the National League of Cities Human Development Committee, and I was recently appointed to the National League of Cities Joint Committee on Homelessness. Some of the issues that I've been able to work on on city council are issues like affordable housing, affordable childcare, and environmental issues. And these are some of the same issues that I want to work on as a county commissioner. We have a lot of work to do with the COVID pandemic and getting people back on their feet. I'm excited to do that work. I have helped lead the city through this time of crisis, and I want to help Laramie County recover and be the best that it can be in the future. So, thank you for having us here tonight. I look forward to the questions. I have the experience that's needed to lead us into the future, and I know that we have a bright future ahead of us in Laramie County. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. All right, now, we'll begin with our candidates for the seat in District Three. We'll start with Ben Ostey. Go ahead, Ben.
Okay, my name is Ben Ostey for District Three. I have the time, the experience, the business acumen, and the motivation for this job. The time is right now because 10 years ago, people began to ask if I would run and be their ears, eyes, and the goat between, between the county and them, and I said I'd be glad to do so. We are empty nesters now, so I have plenty of energy. I fired myself from my business in January, and I'm still getting a check, which is nice. I don't know how much longer I can do that, but so far, so good. I started in land and water development about 35 years ago. I started on county-level experience 32 years ago. I was asked to be on three of the county stakeholder programs here, situations that we had going on, starting with the 402 Expansion Project, the Thompson River Project, and then the landfill. I also sat on a Water and Sanitation District Board for three years. I have been through six, natural and unnatural disasters, and through every one of those, we were not shaken too hard at all. We kept our people, our employees, we stayed in our lines, our budgets. I've managed a multimillion-dollar budget for years on my own, and I believe that I'll be ready to take this job and not be shaken and take us into the future. And thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on. Ben Ostey, District Three.
Thanks, Ben. Appreciate it. Next up for District Three is Miles Baker.
Hi, my name is Miles Baker, and I'm running for Laramie County Commissioner in District Three. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting and the city of Fort Collins for their technical support, and thank you for all the candidates for being here. It's great to see everyone. I'm running to continue my community service involvement. I believe experience matters, and I have eight years of elected experience on the Windsor City Council, including four years as mayor pro temp. I have served on many local and regional committees as well. I've also been a budget analyst for 25 years in the private industry. During these uncertain times, we need experienced leadership. We need someone that can step in on day one, that can address the issues facing the county, including those that have popped up since we started this campaign. I have two teenage boys, and I am rooted in the community. Our issues are many, but Laramie County is an amazing place, and we can and must do better. So, I believe in taking a regional approach to the county issues and working with the local municipalities. I look forward to sharing my vision. Thank you.
Thank you, Miles. Our next candidate for District Three is Aislinn Kotwitz. Did I get that right?
You did. Thank you. I appreciate your effort. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, just as everybody else has said, but I also want to thank anybody who's logging in to watch this. I think engagement and participating and sending in your questions is essential in every election year, and definitely this one, and so the fact that you're watching this online or on TV is very valuable and very important, and that means a lot to me and our community. I was, I'm Colorado native from southeastern Colorado. I was raised in a small agricultural town and an agricultural family, farmers and ranchers. I also was raised by entrepreneurs, so my mom started her own business at just my age from scratch, and my grandfather started his own business from scratch with just an eighth grade education. What that taught me is how to work hard, how to believe in your principles, stick with your values, but what it's really taught me is to serve and to give back to my community. I moved up here to go to CSU, and I met my husband, who's a native of Fort Collins, which there aren't very many of those, and we have our two daughters who are ages nine and almost 12, and on Election Day, she will actually be 12. And then I had the opportunity to serve you on the Fort Collins City Council. That provided the much-needed experience and the opportunity to learn about the local issues that will translate directly into being your Laramie County Commissioner. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Aislinn. And our last candidate for District Three is Jody Shadak McNally. Go ahead, and Jody.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting and organizing this forum tonight, and thank you to all the candidates for participating and all of those who are joining us this evening and listening. I am Jody Shadak McNally. I'm running to serve as your next Laramie County Commissioner for District Three. Every election is a choice, and a choice in 2020 could not be more clear. With a focus on clean air and water, affordable housing, and sustainable growth, I am running to ensure Laramie County government that protects and enhances our quality of life, a Laramie County government that's inclusive and works for all. Together, we can ensure that Laramie County remains affordable and accessible while protecting our natural resources for generations to come. I have been proud to be endorsed by several local elected officials who have been hard at work making a positive impact in the life of your daily life. Laramie County Commissioner John Kafalas, the Loveland Mayor Jackie Marsh, Bertha Mayor Will Carspec, and several other state reps and council people. In 2018, I ran all around the county, helping promote the 2018 Mental Health Initiative for Laramie County, which thanks to Laramie County voters, we were successful in passing and bringing those vital services to Laramie County, which I think in the time of COVID, we're going to need more of those services going forward. I serve on the Laramie County Office on Aging Advisory Council, the Love and Human Services Commission, and many other committees at Laramie County. I have a long track record of community service for 20 years in getting things done in Laramie County, and I have the experience also to get things done. Thank you so much for being here tonight. I'm Jody Shadak McNally.
Thanks, Jody. So, with those introductions under our belts, we're going to start with questions. Bob, you'll get to answer our first question, and then we'll rotate around and circle back to Jeff. Folks often pay far more attention to business in Washington than they do to county-level decisions, even though those county-level decisions arguably make a bigger impact on their day-to-day lives. What methods of communication do you think could be instituted to increase the transparency of the county commissioner's actions and keep county residents informed of the board's work?
Good question. I'll say to start with, the last time I ran for office, we outreach with each precinct we were in, and we had a get-together trying to start that discussion as we moved through the campaign. The answer at the county level is to county seat for a day. This is a process they used to use. I don't think they've used it much recently, where you take the county leadership out to different parts of the county. Typically, they try and meet with the high school kids, and they have a little bit of an education on how government works, and then you meet with the people in the community. So, as you move around the county, the people have an opportunity upfront to talk to you more, you get better input than I think is happening now. So, county seat for the day is my idea of trying to be more transparent and have better outreach into the county.
Thank you, Bob. Same question now to Kristin. What forms of communication would you use to increase transparency to county residents?
Thank you for the question. So, you know, I think that one of the reasons that people don't understand and know some of the work that's being done in the county is because there isn't enough outreach, and so I would like to increase the outreach. I know that commissioners do regular meetings across the county, and I would like to increase the number of those, and maybe have some that continue to be online in a Zoom-type format so that folks that have barriers to participating can participate. I also, you know, think obviously social media can be used effectively to communicate, you know, some of the county issues, and I also think changing the time for some of the meetings, frankly, like having an administrative meeting at 10:00 a.m. on a Tuesday is a time where most people work. And so, I think understanding the barriers for people to participate is very important, making sure we're out in the community, doing work, attending events, and really getting the message out through social media and any new technologies, because I think that's the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Same question to you, Ben. Forms of communication you would embrace?
Well, the answers are all being taken, but I do remember hearing in a couple different of the work sessions that we had, that I sat in on, listening to the people speak. You know, everybody had the three minutes, and when there were issues on the work sessions that the Planning Commission was having, what came up in several of those was, hey, we didn't hear about this, or we just got the word on it. And then I would hear from Matt LaFerty that they had reached out, they had sent out quite a few mailings. What we're finding is the social media has changed so much that they needed to rework that. So, Matt was working on some other ways of reaching out, perhaps texting, perhaps, you know, some other means of reaching out to the people, because in those town meetings and when there were hearings on issues in areas on property rights and some other things, the gravel pit in LaPorte was the big one. They just didn't quite have enough warning to make the meeting, so thank you for that, and that's all I have for you on that one.
Thank you, Ben. Same question to you, Miles. Go ahead.
Thank you. Like Ben said, lots of answers already. I would continue the regional outreach meetings that the commissioners do currently. Holding those on the weekend or evenings is a great way to increase transparency. Also, as Kristin mentioned, having meetings where people can actually go in the evening is a great way to increase transparency. One thing we do in Windsor that's been very successful is including a newsletter produced by the town that's distributed through the utility bill. Now, that would be difficult through the Laramie County because there's so many different utility providers, but I think that's something that we could coordinate, and I think it's an important enough issue to get the word out, increase transparency. So, I would encourage that effort to do a newsletter in utility bill. Thank you.
Thanks, Miles. Same question to you. And candidates, especially as we go, if you ever need me to repeat the question, especially as you're later in the line, feel free to ask. That doesn't cut into your time, but if you're good, I won't repeat it unnecessarily. So, Aislinn, same question to you. Forms of communication for transparency for county residents?
Yeah, thank you so much. I think there's multiple aspects to this, and, you know, we've been faced with a very unique time, unprecedented, has been thrown around quite a bit, but it's created great innovation. I mean, all of the candidates on here right now have been trying to reach voters and get their message out in many different ways that maybe we haven't done in the past. And so, I think continuing to use those methods. I'm a healthcare administrator now, and working in healthcare, we're even using simple things as calling in to get information. There's so many opportunities to do that. I think, yes, increasing the speed going throughout the county, I won't repeat that, but I think in addition to that, I think regional cooperation with the municipalities, aside from just getting work done, but I think there's a great opportunity to utilize the city of Fort Collins, the city of Loveland, Windsor, Johnstown, Estes Park, and their forms of communication to also help get that information out. And more importantly, as an elected official, it's important to hear and listen to each of your constituents and be responsive. Thank you.
Thanks, Aislinn. Last, but not, oh no, we're shuddering back to Jeff. So, Jody, same question to you. Transparency and communication.
Thank you. I believe that any and all modes of communication are necessary in this time of COVID and going forward. I believe that as we transition back into face-to-face meetings, we need to keep this innovation and these new processes that we have reached out to communicating. I attended a conversation with Commissioner Kafalas this morning in the town of Wellington, and it was via Zoom, and it was really a great conversation. I think those should continue, especially for those who are isolated, socially isolated or in rural areas. I believe that there's newsletters that are sent out from the commissioners. I think we make sure people can sign up and get that information. I think social media, I serve on the Laramie County Office on Aging Advisory Council as a council member. We head out, we used to, we're hoping to do this again, heading out to congregate meal sites and talk to folks about the services that are available, and then refer them to a number that you can call and talk to a live person and get information. So, I think any and all methods are going forward. This is how we get to where people are at to make sure they understand and know how county government works for them and answer any questions or concerns that they have.
Thank you, Jody. And now, last but not least on this question, Jeff, go ahead. Same question to you.
You bet. Thank you. I, being on the Planning Commission, has put me in a position where I have asked for, and we have used this type of technology before. I actually attended a Planning Commission meeting from the top of Wolf Creek Pass. I was headed to southern Colorado for a business, and we did what we had to do. One of the things that'll come out of this is that we really do have the opportunity to plug people in who have either been afraid of this technology or not used to it. It's now becoming something that they're more comfortable with. Obviously, I built this studio in order to be able to do this, and this will be something that I will continue. We will continue to reach out to our voters. We will continue to do podcasting. We will continue to have these kinds of meetings. And of course, every politician and every candidate you've ever seen, we run on caffeine, so we drink a lot of coffee.
Thank you, Jeff. Our next question is related to environmental issues. There's two parts in this, and Kristin, you will be the first person to answer. We want to know what one environmental issue that you think is most critical to the future of Laramie County, and how would you raise awareness of this issue? Maybe, and everybody mentioned social media and their general outreach, but what are other ways that you would raise awareness about that key environmental issue?
Good for the question. So, you know, I think that the concerns around climate change are one of the biggest issues that we're facing in the county and nationwide and worldwide. So, we, you know, we have a limited amount of time to fix this problem, and we've already seen a lot of the devastating effects with floods and fires in our county. And so, you know, I think reducing greenhouse gas emissions, really making sure that we have a resiliency plan for mitigating some of these issues is really important for us. You know, I think that we need to commit to that plan before it's too late. How to get that message out to folks? I think really you need to get buy-in for an issue like climate action. You really need to make sure that everyone knows how they can do their part, but I would like to see action on this. I would like to see the county embrace this, you know, move towards more energy efficiency buildings and do all the work of convening the municipalities and trying to get a full countywide plan for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Same question to you, Ben. Key environmental issue and how you would raise awareness about it?
I'm going to go with water for 500,000 to 600,000. Right now, we are, last year, let's see, the 19 census was 350,000 people, and we will be at probably 362 or so at the end of this year's census, I'm guessing, and increasing. We chose the best county in the doggone state, of course, to live in, and so the water concerns are huge. And in that impact, we have a lot of folks that are very concerned about NISP and some of the other water storage facilities that are being proposed and on their way. And so, to find that place, to make sure we impact as little as possible, the animals, the wildlife, that, you know, everything that's out there, the mountains. I was always taught to leave it nicer than when you got there and when you hiked and when you camped, and so I am a conservationist, an Eagle Scout, and I do want to make sure we protect everything that we have been given and be good stewards of it. So, I will be watching that closely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Same question now to you, Miles. A key environmental issue.
Great, thank you. Obviously, the key environmental issue is climate change, and we are seeing that with fires and floods, and I think that's only going to continue to happen. We need to make sure our emergency preparedness is prepared. Those are only going to happen more, and like Kristin said, we have a limited time to fix this. I would like to get the word out through kind of what we talked about in the first question, lots of social media, we need buy-in, we need awareness from our general public. They need to recognize this, and that's incumbent on us to educate them on that. One thing I would propose is to maybe offer property tax discounts or credits for residential homes that go to solar energy, and this would reduce the greenhouse emissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Miles. Same question to you now, it's Aislinn. Key environmental issue and how you would do outreach around that issue?
I'm going to cheer a little bit and say it's water and the landfill. I agree with water. It's not just storage, but it's also, and I would say accessibility is the issue, and it's for farmers and ranchers as well as municipalities, but it's also clean water. That's so important. And having worked on the Halligan Water Project back in, gosh, 2009, I think, and it's finally starting to be rediscovered again, which would have very little impact on the environment or require less mitigation than something like NISP, the opportunity has been there for quite some time, and, you know, I'm glad to see them taking an interest in it now, but foresight is important, looking to the future and knowing that that project would need to be important. The landfill, as we all know, is about its capacity, and diversion is absolutely an issue, but there's so much more to address that, and communication is not just through all the methods that we've talked about, but we can use that through the school district, through CSU, and all the other methods of communication. It doesn't need to be just the county. Thank you.
Thanks, Aislinn. Same question to you now, Jody. Key environmental issue and how you would communicate about it?
Well, I'm a proud graduate of the CSU Water Center Water Leader Leaders Program, so I would have to say, for me, it's our water, clean-up water and climate change, which are actually integrated and closely linked together. I think going forward, we need to make sure that our public is engaged and has ownership in helping solve these problems. We need to engage municipalities and all stakeholders, including businesses, nonprofit agencies, other agencies, and our school districts, because I think our younger generations need to be educated and understand how important this issue and what they can do to be part of the solution. I think going forward, engaging folks, everyone likes to be outside recreating, and I think having informational tables or engaging folks out in the recreational area, understand how important this issue is going forward, and then just constant educational programs through emails and public awareness campaigns on YouTube or social media, or even on publications is going to be important going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Jeff, same question to you, please.
As many people know, Laramie County, northern Colorado, is out of ozone compliance, and air quality is one of the issues that we have worked on for years. We've made great strides. We need to really encourage industry to continue with those innovations that they have come up with. Oil and gas has made tremendous advances in how they capture or do not even release VOCs into our atmosphere. One of the things that very easily could come out of this spot we're in right now is we keep people at home to be able to work from home. You know, in Wellington, almost 95% of that town leaves that town to go to work every day, and if we could let them, or if business and industry could keep them at home to do their jobs, that would make a tremendous impact on our environment, on our air quality, and I'm on all of the above. Get the word out every way you possibly can. Educate, 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 and we'll be good.
Thank you, Jeff. Same question now to Bob. Final answer on this one.
Great, thank you. I think the initiative I'd look at would be to promote better carbon sequestration in agriculture, such as no-till farming. I think there's a lot of opportunities in agriculture for us to make some headway there. I think when you talk about the awareness, I'll step back. In my experience on city council in Fort Collins and the state legislature when we had meetings, there's a difference between having outreach meetings and having people show up. My experience was you have to make them interesting, as is brought up before, you have to look at the time that you do it, but I think a lot of times in the past, the counties had meetings, and you have three or four people show up, and it's really not effective outreach. So, I think we have to start back at the beginning and say, how can we get people there? How can we talk to them so we can make progress in these issues? And that would be one of my main goals, is working on that outreach to make it meaningful, not just doing it, but making it meaningful.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it. Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it. We're going to move on to our next question now. Talking about budgets. So with expected shortfalls in revenue due to the recent downturn in the economy, what are your priorities for retaining important services? Obviously, these are unprecedented times and everybody's still reeling from the new reality. But we'd love for you to shed some light on what your priorities are as you think about making hard decisions and retaining important services. I believe on this one, we are going to start now with Ben.
So we're going to have to tighten our belts. There's no question about it. There's already some property tax issues coming up. They're, they're looking at ways to come up with a difference that we're going to be looking at because we used most of our general budget for the 2012 and the 2013 disasters that we had. That was great. They did well. I commend the previous commissioners for having that much money on hand. I think we had a remainder of, oh, $20 million left was all we had left to take care of the 13 damage. And that was, that's about two months old, that, that information. So I would propose that we would not hire any more else on in the county at all. And if it drops off, folks leave. We try to make do with who we have, become more efficient with the people that are already working for the county that are on the payroll. And that will be one way to curb it. And there's some other things that I'm working on that I'm not quite done with on my research, but other ideas. Thank you for your time on that one.
Thank you, Ben. Miles, same question to you with budget shortfalls. What would be your priorities for retaining important services?
Yeah, thank you very much. We're going to have a tough, some really tough decisions to make going forward, I think. And I think the priority on retaining services has to do with the health, safety, and welfare of our community. And that means the Health and Human Services. And those need to be the last cuts. Places we could cut, a hiring freeze, and capital improvements. So those are difficult as well, but they don't impact the, as long as they don't impact the health, wealth, and safety of our community, I think those cuts will be okay. So I think we need to hire freeze and not cut the budgets that impact the community and the people at large.
Thank you, Miles. Same question to you now, Aislinn.
Thank you. I had the, I don't know, the opportunity, the luxury to be on the city council during the last economic downturn. And it was challenging and it was hard. And we made some very tough decisions. A lot of the parks and rec was cut. In fact, they shut off all of the play areas in the city of Fort Collins. And, you know, I reached out to the community and within a week, we had some of those funded. Now, that's not always going to be the opportunity that we have, but it's thinking outside the box and not business as usual. There's always opportunity. We live in an amazing community. We all believe that, or we wouldn't be here. And so I think we need to think out the box. And we have so, we have such a great community as far as businesses and education and volunteerism. And we have a lot of opportunities here. I think as far as the two things that should absolutely not be cut would obviously be health and human services, but also safety. So when it comes to funding things that have to do with the Sheriff's Office and things that are protecting our community as well. But I'm confident we can do that moving forward.
Thank you, Aislinn. Same question now to you, Jody.
Actually, I was just having this conversation this morning with Commissioner Capos at the Wellington Conversation. And I know there is a big meeting next week, but it will be very interesting to see what is the projections on it forward. And I just got out of my Human Services Commission where we were talking about pretty drastic cuts. I have served on the Thompson School District Budget Proposal Team and during the last recession for two years where we had to make cuts. And we were able to maintain all of our employees and make cuts and, and get through that crisis. And I think that's another thing we'll have to look for with departments to look what they need to do to cut to help with that budget. But first and foremost, we have to protect the, the services for health and safety and welfare of our communities. And we're going to need to work with the municipalities and other regions to help leverage those resources going forward so that we can make sure that a citizen, especially recovering from COVID with economic resiliency as well, that we're working to get through this crisis together and move forward and, and try to come through with everybody as intact as possible and, and see what we can do to work together.
Thank you, Jody. Same question now to Jeff. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yes, thank you. The budgets are always a challenge. And I, I've been involved in budgets from small business to corporations for many years. One of the challenges that we're going to have here are, of course, is our other seven elected officials in Larimer County. And each of those departments are going to have to take the same hard look at those individual areas and, and figure out how they're going to be able to tighten their belt. You know, Larimer County has been very fortunate in the last three assessment periods. The commissioners have provided a refund via mill levy credits in order to, in order to not spend absolutely everything that they've been given. We need to continue that mindset. We need to make sure that we don't push our budgets to the point where we're digging into reserves. It's going to be really critical that we conserve that. We need to make sure that each of the service areas do exactly the same thing. It's going to be a tough time. It's going to be a tough three to five years as we move forward on this, for sure. And we can get through this. We just need the leadership to get us there.
Thank you, Jeff. Same question now to Bob.
Thank you. Obviously, public safety, health and human services are two of the keys that you try not to make cuts in unless you absolutely have to. My experience being in business for over 30 years and meeting a budget there, Fort Collins City Council for four years, down in the state legislature for four years, I've been through a lot of budgets. When you're cutting millions of dollars down in Denver, it's a pretty big process. A lot of people think when you're doing that, you're going to cut the bad stuff and keep the good stuff. That's really not what the way it works. Sometimes you have questions like you cut kids on Medicaid, or you cut higher ed. Both very good departments doing good things. But when you have to cut, the state has to balance their budget as the county has to. You need to make those tough decisions. That's where I experienced in business for a number of years, experience on the Fort Collins City Council, the state legislature, working with budgets, much bigger budgets than the county will come in handy. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And last for this question, Kristin, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I mean, this is something that we've been talking about at the city council level for the past couple of months. You know, we know there's declining revenues. The county is a little differently poised because most of their dollars come from property tax. So, so a lot depends on what happens with the Gallagher amendments that are going through the state legislature right now. But suffice it to say that everybody's going to have to tighten their belts. You know, I, obviously, taking care of folks is going to be the number one goal. There are a lot of people that are struggling, really hurting in our communities, having, experiencing food insecurity and worried about how they're going to pay their rent. So we can't cut into those services, knowing we have to help people get back on their feet. You know, I've been in touch through my, through my council job with a lot of congressmen and people in the state. And one thing that we can do too is make sure that we are getting the, the dollars from the federal government to address some of these issues that are coming up. And so I think having those relationships with elected officials is important.
Thank you, Kristin. So our next question gets to the heart of what's on so many people's minds. And that is this, this recent COVID-19 crisis. Imagining that you were currently in the seat of county commissioner that you seek to hold in the fall, what do you think the county commissioners and the public health department should be doing to prepare for a second possible wave of COVID-19? And also, emergency plans for a future pandemic? So again, the question is, if you were in the seats now, what do you think the county commissioners and public health department should be doing to prepare for a possible second wave? And also thinking long-term emergency plans for a future pandemic? No pressure. If you could just solve that for us tonight. We're going to start on this one with Miles and we'll continue from there.
Yeah, no problem. We got this covered tonight, I'm sure. What I would do, I would immediately have an audit of the response. And not to cast blame, I think the health department has done a great job. But I think we need to learn what we can do better for the next time. And that's going to be really important. I think we need coordination between the health department, our local hospital and medical providers, and the municipalities. We need to be working collectively. One thing I found was difficult or interesting was the mask rules seem to change from city to city. And I know everyone has their own rules and self-govern. But I wish, I would like to see the county kind of take the lead and work with the cities and maybe come up with a uniform system throughout the county. So I think we need to do an audit. I think we need to look at what we can do better. Not that we did bad, but what we can do better. And also with high unemployment, people will be without their employer-based healthcare. So I think the health department is going to have to really step in and help serve these people that are losing their healthcare and look at underlying issues with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Miles. Same question now to Aislinn.
Thank you for that question. Obviously, working in healthcare and a hospital administrator right now, I have been eyeball deep in this COVID crisis. It's, there's so much opportunity. I mean, we have some of the best healthcare systems in the state. Amazing. And watching them all come together to serve our community within minutes was amazing to watch. And that's what we need to rely on moving forward. Deregulating when it comes to giving healthcare, to providing healthcare to people, that provided the opportunity to move so quickly, to create more beds, to have the staff to do this. In addition to that, there's been innovation when it comes to making hand sanitizer, to Woodward Governor making ventilators. I actually was working with my exterminator to come up with a plan to decontaminate PPE for no reason other than it was a great idea. Let's move this forward. And it cost next to nothing. And it's people coming together and allowing that innovation and working together. I think we're actually very well-suited moving forward and bringing all those people to the table.
Thanks, Aislinn. Same question now to Jody. Preparedness for a second wave of COVID in the fall and future pandemic preparedness?
I mean, my family's been on the front lines. I had them in all the emergency rooms along Larimer County. So I have been very plugged into this issue and listening to some of the calls, federal and state, and the problem solving from the, from the medical professionals trying to figure out how they can work together. And they would come home from long shifts and be discussing, how can we do this better for the next day? And it was constantly changing. And so I think everyone was working very hard to do whatever they could to help for the health, the health, safety, and welfare of the community and the patients. And I think I agree with Aislinn that the health systems worked amazingly together. They came together and came up with a plan and, and with a common bolt, working together for the health of the, of the community. And I think we learned a lot of lessons. We've gone down where now we have testing for almost everyone immediately in the county. In Loveland yesterday, it was the center that opened up. But I think going forward, we learned a lot. I mean, get more of those measures in place for the next pandemic. So we have PPE, healthcare available, and the testing. And I think there's a lot to learn, bring all the stakeholders to that table. And, and going forward and working together for the next wave is going to be critical.
Thank you, Jody. Same question to you now, Jeff.
Yes, thank you. I, I think the county has, has responded in varying ways. And different people are going to have different opinions about that. Very, very early on, our Office of Emergency Management came to the commissioners and asked for funds in order to help them respond. So very early on, the, the county commissioners moved $500,000 into the response fund for our Office of Emergency Management. We brought on Laura Levy, who helped us recover from the floods and fires of 12 and 13. The county is working very hard already, creating the committees, creating the voices in this county that will come together and, and figure out what works and what didn't work. Our, our Office of Emergency Management was a result of the floods and fires. We will not sit on our hands again. We will continue as an organization to innovate and look at what we need to do to be ready. And we will be.
Thank you, Jeff. Same question now to you, Bob.
Thank you. I think in the early days, both the county and the health department struggled through the process. Something new they had to deal with. I think the health department now, with the amount of testing and contact tracing they're doing, have made great strides in that area. I think what we need to do is, one, as people have said, develop a new plan. While it's fresh in our mind from this variation, put together a new pandemic plan so we are more ready for the second go around. I think the county itself needs to put together a county comprehensive economic restoration plan. What I've heard from a lot of people at both the state and the local level is it wasn't flexible. It was one size fits all. You talk to a lot of business people and other people that say the model's coming out, but they haven't talked to us. And it's ambiguous. I think we can clear these up before next, next time, both on the health side and on the economic side. We need to have both of those together by the fall. So we're ready to attack it when it comes in next time.
Thank you, Bob. Kristin, same question to you.
Great, thank you. So I've been doing this work for the past few months. You know, certainly a pandemic is not something many of us plan for. In talking to the fire chief, he said, you know, we plan to put out fires and, and floods and, and, and then take care of people in accidents. This is not something that we planned for. It's something we need to plan for in the future. And it needs to be part of all our planning documents. So, you know, this, there, there is likely to be a resurgence from what we're hearing from the news and during cold and flu season. And it, and it's going to be a double whammy for us. So, I mean, we really need to take care of folks during this time. What we've realized is people have food insecurity, you know, fear of not paying their rent. You know, we're trying to get businesses back in, in business. And how do you do that in a safe way? You know, there are mental health needs that need to be met. And so there's so many issues that came up with this that we just weren't prepared. I think the county having a recovery task force that involves business and nonprofit providers and emergency management folks can help prepare us for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. And last on this question, Ben, go ahead.
Thank you, Terry. Yes, I started over, we actually did over 100 Zooms when this began with all different sectors in the county. And it was great to hear from the people. They needed to be encouraged. I asked them, what could I do for them? And so I began to enter, just connect them with the other folks that were going through it in different ways. The restaurateurs, the brewers, the farmers, ranchers, the attorneys, the bankers. I mean, everything you can imagine, small business, large business. And they actually came up with so many ideas, brainstorming. It was like a think tank on Zoom. And they came up with a lot that they could add to and give to the county. So we gave a lot of information to Lori Hodges, to Adam Crowe, that was in charge of re-engagement, to Laura Levy. They were all great. So they were there to help. And they wanted to hear from the people. So the people actually developed a lot of getting the re-engagement going. And are, are still doing that. It's ongoing. And they wanted that. So I just give them kudos for the great job they did in listening to the people. And everybody has to be cool, be constructive, don't give them a hard time. It's a rough time already. So thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate it. All right. Our next question is about housing affordability. And it remains to be seen how the economic downturn affects housing prices in Larimer County. But being that it is such a desirable place to live, I suspect that housing affordability will continue to be an issue. If not immediately, it will be in the long term. There are affordable housing projects underway in Fort Collins and Loveland. But what more should the county be doing to address this problem? And we'd like you to consider both housing affordability for working families who are simply priced out of the market, all the way to those experiencing homelessness and living in true poverty. Again, big picture problems, big picture questions that if we could get you to solve in just 60 seconds, that would be great. We're going to start on this one with Aislinn, housing affordability.
Thank you for that question. You know, housing affordability seems, the conversation seems to stand around just how many units are within a certain price range delegated in different communities. And affordability, housing affordability is affected by so many other things. Restaurants closing, businesses closing, not having jobs available for whether it's middle income or middle wage. That's, those are all problems that need to be addressed. Transportation actually significantly affects it. Access to water, utilities, costs, food production. There are so many things to consider when you're talking about affordable housing. And so there is going to be a challenge. I mean, there are, but all things are considered. You cannot have a short-sighted perspective on just the number of units. It's got to be much larger than that. In addition to that, every policy decision that's made can have intended but unintended consequences. And I saw that often on the city council, that there were decisions that made that negatively affect affordable housing that were unintended. So we need to be cautious. Thank you. Thanks, Ari.
You did it. You're good. Appreciate you paying attention to those time limits. All right, same question, housing affordability. Jody, go ahead.
Well, I think going forward, especially as we cover, as we recover, become a resilient after COVID and the subsequent economic crisis, we're going to have to really look at how we keep people housed. And, and it's much better financially for us in the county and for our communities and for those individuals to be stay housed and for their health and safety and welfare. And so I think partnering with municipalities, housing authorities, leveraging our resources to help keep those folks housed and innovative ideas how we do that going forward. There are some great plans and innovative ideas that came out of this COVID pandemic. And I think going forward, we need to work together and... And I think going forward, we need to work together and make sure that everyone in the county is safely housed. We talk about housing affordability, especially for working families and the workforce. We need to look at those, again, having a countywide, maybe a housing authority, working the housing catalyst and the housing authorities in Loveland and around the county and see what we can do to come together as a group to solve those issues together. There's good models out there. And I think instead of recreating the wheel, we can find something innovative to work together on.
Great. Thank you, Jody. Same question to you now, Jeff.
Yes, thank you. Housing affordability is something that we will, I think, always deal with. It's, you know, there was said one time that people will drive until they qualify. And some of our regulations and policies that have been adopted in our, in our communities in Laramore County have pushed those people outside of Laramore County. And then that creates all other problems, you know, in infrastructure and the rest of that. We have some incredible nonprofits in Laramore County that are working closely with our, with our homeless. And we need to continue to support that. But the number one thing that we have to do in order to bring down the price of housing is to begin to bring down the regulation that is adding cost. Right now, according to the Builders' Association, 25% of the cost of every home is regulation. That's too high. We need to be able to do that better. And we can do that here.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Same question to you now, Bob.
Thank you. I think it's usually a combination of answers that usually solve this kind of problem. When I was the liaison on the Fort Collins City Council to the Community Development Block Grant Process, this is the one that gets federal money every year. And they have to, this committee looks at how to give the money out to help the housing stock in Fort Collins. My understanding was the list was long when I was there, and it continues to be. Every year, you chip away at with it, and you don't make a lot of difference on it. But you're trying to add more units. It's whether you give a little bit of money to a lot of units or more money to less units. It's a problem that's been here for a while. I think the issue we're missing in that is the creating good jobs. What I talked about earlier is if we can create more good primary jobs in Laramore County, the people will be able to afford their housing and be able to pay for those homes in Laramore County and not need to go outside of the county to live. So I think more primary jobs, creating those through the county processes would be the way to go.
Thank you, Bob. Same question to you now, Kristin.
Thank you. So, you know, affordability in general is tough in our county. You know, we've talked briefly, people have talked about childcare. But that's one of the issues that makes, you know, people's expenses so burdensome is childcare is expensive and hard to find. And, you know, people might have other, you know, other issues in their family. Their electric bills are high. And so I think, you know, looking at a general affordability issues is really important. I know that the county delivers a lot of human services and those need to, we need to do outreach and make sure that everyone who qualifies for those programs and services accesses those. As far as actually building, I mean, you know, we don't have, this is a complicated question for one minute. But, you know, our nonprofit builders have done a great job. I think trying to get them more dollars through the continuum of care and CDBG dollars that Bob talked about, I think would be, would be helpful. I don't see a lot of private builders being able to access the lower income markets. And so I think we really need to bolster our nonprofits in doing this work.
Thank you, Kristin. Same question now to Ben.
Well, if you build up on the same foundation, that's, that's a lesser expensive square footage to build, similar to these brownstone ideas. There is a builder down in Bertha that I did watch a little bit about how he was doing this. Now, he was not as, the money was not as important to him. So he was cutting a major break to the people to buy these houses. I think he was saving them about $50,000 on the homes. So I think we'll see more of that, especially if we can give them some incentives on the land and the water. The water use, the size of the taps have been constricted a little bit. Obviously, if we have zirkscape, we don't have to water too much. No lawns allowed, just do something else. There's many things that I think we can do. I think some people are moving east, like drive, drive, drive to the home. That's happening. Lemke's got water stored out there on the east, east of Greeley. There's going to be some more building out that direction because it's lesser expensive. Modular home companies, mobile home parks, all that. We're going to probably see more of that now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Same question now to Miles.
Great, thank you. Really important issue, great question. Affordable housing is a regional issue. It's not, and right now, we're just kind of looking at Loveland's doing their thing and Fort Collins is doing their thing. We need to spread the cost throughout the region. And obviously, it's impacted by development fees, water costs. Those are huge impediments to development. The impact of moving east is we create more traffic as people come in to work and for medical services and other services. So it's an important issue. I would propose that the county get more involved and use, create a grant fund, maybe a million dollars, and allow the municipalities to apply for it to get reimbursed for the development fees that they have to waive. In Windsor, we partnered with Loveland Housing Authority, and we waived $650,000 in development fees. Smaller communities can't do that. If this grant fund was available, the smaller communities could still waive their fees, get reimbursed for those. And that would spread the cost and encourage other communities to do affordable housing as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Miles. All right, our next question, sorry, I'm just making sure that I'm asking the right people, the right questions in the right order. Let's talk about oil and gas, but really thinking about safety. And this question is going to go to Jody first. Jody, what would be your plan for monitoring existing wells and/or orphan wells in regards to public health and safety?
Well, again, this is a very complicated question for 60 seconds. But for monitoring wells, I do want to say that I think going forward, I do want to revisit the current oil and gas regulations that were just voted in. I think that the setbacks in those need to be revisited. But also, air monitoring, I think we need to have air quality monitoring systems all throughout the county. And I think at regional, we should all be putting in a little bit of money to put those in place and monitor those in that the public should have access to that 24/7 to be able to monitor air quality, especially near oil and gas extraction operations. I think also orphan wells, that's going to take money and enforcement and having people out there to go out and monitor that and then the cleanup fund. So I think that industry will need to pay into that fund if they want to have business in Laramore County, they should be paying into that fund to help manage those orphan wells. And we need to get on top of those. I know there are several of those in existence, and we need to be progressive on getting those fixed.
Thank you, Jody. Same question to you now, Jeff.
Okay, thank you. Carrie, you're doing a fine job. Don't worry about who you're asking.
I didn't make up the questions either. So sorry, they're super hard. But it's just a foreshadowing of the real issues that are super hard that you'll deal with, so.
It's, you know, 60 seconds is very difficult to, to address these issues. But, you know, there is, we just adopted oil and gas regulations for the very first time in Laramore County. We never had those regulations before. I was on, I'm on the planning commission and we worked on those. There was a group of, a special group that were pulled together and made those recommendations to us. And we changed some of those when they got to us. The oil and gas industry is not a huge industry in Laramore County. You know, we sit right on the edge of, of an oil and gas reserve down by the Loveland area. And it's important that that industry pay attention to the safety. I worked in that industry for a very short time years ago. They are the most highly regulated, and they pay attention in a very big way to their safety. And I expect that will continue.
Thank you, Jeff. Same question now to Bob.
Thank you. Obviously, the question comes up often about, about air quality. When the, the task force that the county just had do its work, did a survey, the three items people were the most concerned about were air, water, and the environment. It's very important to people when they're looking at the new gas exploration. What I found in attending these meetings was the technology is going to be the answer on a lot of the operations around the oil and gas operations. When they talked about continuous monitoring, the industry talked about that is coming along, but the technology isn't quite there yet. I think when you look at the leaks on the tanks and the transmission lines, a lot of that because the technology is becoming much more efficient. And when they talk about doing the checks more often, I think the air quality will be better. But the technology, I think, is going to be the answer in that area to have better air quality for everybody.
Thank you, Bob. Same question now to you, Kristin.
Sure. This is a topic that's really concerning many of our residents, and rightly so. There's just a lot of unknowns in this area of, you know, some of the health effects that we have from oil and gas extraction in our community. And we don't have a lot in our community. There is a lot in Weld, and we are suffering the consequences from poor air quality, from not enough emissions being trapped in Weld County. We don't want to have, we don't want to exacerbate those problems. We, you know, we should have, I believe we should have had further setbacks, further setbacks from water. I believe that we, we should have had the public more involved in these discussions when there's oil and gas extraction happening near their neighborhoods. And so I would like to see a revisiting of, of some of the rules. But I definitely think we need to have a really strong emissions control on, on any existing and abandoned wells. Because, you know, our, the comprehensive plan for the county specifically states that the health of our community is one of the most important things that we need to look out for. And, you know, this, that's a way we could do it by having stricter controls on oil and gas extraction.
Thank you, Kristin. Same question now to Ben.
Yes, thank you. So I was at the first task force meeting that our county did for the first time. They never had that in place before. So they did a great job. I stayed abreast of it. Matt Lafferty sent those notes to me. And so I stayed in it. It had changed quite a bit. And it was awesome to see and hear all the different input on that. I'm still learning more about that. Fortunately, we don't have that many wells in our county at the moment. But in going forward in the future on the setbacks, I do want to do some more homework on that, to be honest with you. I don't want to infringe on people's property rights, though, either, because you have to hear everything out. Everything needs to be listened to. Every one needs to be listened to. And each one on a pad by pad basis, each location, I think should be looked at. I think they vary. There's plenty of room in some areas that no one can be possibly hurt or affected by it adversely. In other cases, their folks are encroached upon. So I will look at those if I am the next commissioner for District 3. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Same question now to Miles.
Thank you very much. You know, as everyone knows, Windsor is probably on the front lines of oil and gas development. I've dealt with that for the last eight years on the Windsor Town Board. And Laramore County did pass a regulation. But I consider those mostly nuisance regulations about noise and the road or the lighting that they use. What I would do, and I've advocated in Windsor unsuccessfully, given it's Windsor, I would say no oil and gas drilling or development on residential zone property, regardless of the setback. I would also advocate for continuous air monitoring, like Jody mentioned. This is important. We have a ma, major university in our county that could probably help with that and are already doing some testing around the state. I would also advocate for bonds or escrow accounts for companies to fund in case they go out of business. This would, for reclamation of abandoned wells. So if they go out of business and their well, they leave a well, we need to have a bond paid for by them to reclaim that well and that land.
Thank you, Miles. Same question now to Aislinn.
Thank you for that. I was on the council, again, dealing with oil and gas when there was a proposal of a moratorium. And there was, so I worked with the industry quite a bit, as well as the government and the citizens regarding safety. And we looked at all types of things. And one that hasn't even been mentioned here today was the chemical storage, and both before and after, and then the transportation of that. And, you know, we talked to the industry about it. And with the technology, they resolved that issue. And so I think that there's so many aspects, and oil and gas is just one portion of our energy portfolio in the county. And I think that we need to pay attention and make sure that there is health and safety involved, that the state regulations are some of the strictest in the county. And we just added more regulations that it's not regulating for the sake of regulation, but we're actually working with the industry and we are doing the research to have the facts on what's best for the health of our citizens in Laramore County.
Thank you, Aislinn. All right, our next question is about criminal justice. Laramore County is responsible for law enforcement, including supporting the court system and district attorney, as well as providing jail facilities through the sheriff. What would you say is working well in the Laramore County justice system? And where are there areas for improvement needed? This one, we are back to the beginning now with Jeff.
Okay, I'm back. Thank you. We do have some incredible programs here in Laramore County. Our COMCor is a model for the country. And our, and people look from all over the country into Laramore County. The innovations that have happened there in our community corrections are phenomenal. You know, the, the thing about Laramore County is, is our sheriff is, is elected independently apart from the rest of the county, just like seven other, eight other departments. And so he is in charge of that. I think our, our criminal justice system in Laramore County is, is working very well. We have become a model in many areas to, to continue to, to innovate. I think that's going to continue. Our sheriff has been very innovative in, in how they handle our jail and community corrections and those types of programs. So I think we're doing very well.
Thank you, Jeff. Next up is Bob.
Thank you. I think our system is also functioning very well. With Justin Smith as our sheriff, I think we've done very good things. He's developed his people. So he's got a very strong team behind him. And I think that part's working very well. We also should be very proud of the number of people they've been able to keep out of the jail and keep our numbers down a little bit, better than a lot of parts of the state. Remember, we are one of the few counties that run our own jails. Most of them have a private corporation come in and run their jails. We don't have that. And I think we have a better result because of that. I think when you look towards the future, you have a sheriff and you have departments that are looking towards new practices, new things in the courthouse at the moment. They're looking at adding another courtroom. And that's where you're going to need leadership to work with the judiciary on how to do that. As was mentioned earlier, when you have different elected officials, like the district attorney and like the other positions, they don't respond to the county commissioners. They have to work with them. Those relationships are important.
Thank you, Bob. Next question to Kristin. Again, focusing on what is going well in criminal justice and where could improvements be made?
Sounds good. Well, I hope you don't hear my hound dog howling in the background. I, you know, this is an issue that's really on people's minds this week. You know, we have some crisis in, in criminal justice, and we need, desperately need criminal justice reform in our country. You know, I think that community corrections is working really well, but it's just not funded at the level it needs to be. So community corrections helps folks get back into the community after they've served jail or prison time and really can provide them with job skills and emotional and mental health skills to, to be successful when they get out of jail. And we're, you know, it was tied into a ballot issue with some other items, including transportation that failed. And, you know, now we're expanding a jail without really doing the work of expanding a program like community corrections, which would be, that I believe would better serve our community. And so we need to, you know, we need to stop keeping people in jail because they can't pay their bail. We need to make sure that we're keeping kids and young folks out of jail and providing them opportunities to be successful again. And I think investing in community corrections would be the way to do that.
Thank you, Kristin. Same question now to Ben.
I think they've been doing a great job. I myself can speak from some experience in several different areas. One, we were broken into, and the sheriff's department took great care of us and actually apprehended the person. And he was assigned to a halfway house, and that all went well. I mean, everything from traffic control situations where we have on some of our highways by our business. We have some other property along Big Thompson where we have some homeless concerns there. It's a constant every two month deal that I have to call a deputy. And they've done a great job. I don't know what else we could ask more of them. I do hear from some of the people in Red Feather area that they, they would like to have some more deputies up there. It's a large area. Of course, as we get further out of the central municipality areas, we have some thinness of the deputies to be able to make those patrols and serve those people out there. So I don't know how to do that exactly yet, but I'm looking into that as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ben. Same question now to Miles.
Great, thank you. I think the community corrections does a very good job. I like the third partnerships with nonprofits, with the potential partnering with the Behavioral Health Center and getting the people Health Center and getting the people treated and not just continuing to incarcerate them. I am concerned about the jail expansion. We did need modernization. My concern stems from the fact that it wasn't voted on by the public and there was not a dedicated revenue source to pay for the, um, certificate of participation. So that's a concern I have. Um, I, but I do think they do a good job. I do believe we need continuous training and awareness, body cameras and some, uh, use of force reforms and look at all of that, independent studies and review, the review, uh, the use of force procedures. Thank you.
Thank you, Miles. Same question now to Aislinn.
Thank you. So you mentioned the DA's office as well as the sheriff's office. And I think an amazing thing that they've done is victim advocacy. There has been a lot of work, uh, by our current DA in regards to, uh, even just functional space when these, um, unfortunate victims are faced, um, with their, the ones that are, um, I'm trying to choose my words carefully, that are accused of the crime against them. And so that's been amazing. And then in addition to that, they have many resources that they've added in the last handful of years to support the victims. I think that continues to need to be funded and supported. Um, and in regards to, uh, the training aspect, which is obviously on the front of a lot of people's minds, ensuring that that's been funded and support of rehabilitation of, uh, people who unfortunately need to enter the justice system and ensure that they are not, um, stuck in the justice system.
Okay, thank you, Aislinn. Uh, same question now to Jody.
Thank you for that question. I think there's lots to celebrate with, uh, the county leading the state in alternative sentencing, community corrections and the wellness court. I think there's a lot of successes there and I need, think we need to continue to fund and grow those programs and support those staff members who've done a great job growing that program. Um, also with the addition of the mental health, um, center who, which will break ground in 2021, um, that addition and bringing more behavioral and mental health services, uh, I think that will help with some of the issues of getting some people that are, don't belong in jail, um, and pre-trial services and, and help with, uh, keeping them out of the system. I think overall, um, there's lots to celebrate with. We have some amazing, uh, first, uh, uh, law enforcement officers and we thank them for their service during this time. But I think in this, they need with, uh, the justice system and, uh, the request for reforms, we need to take a, a comprehensive overview of our entire system and our law enforcement and just review all the policies and training and make sure that we are, uh, currently addressing all those needs and make sure there's, uh, things that we can reform and get better. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Uh, so the question of air quality has come up, uh, in questions about the environment and, uh, the safety of wells. Um, specifically, we want to know, how would you work with other stakeholders across the region to address, address the degrading air quality levels on the front range and along parts of the ICE 25 corridor? Uh, and we are starting this time with Bob.
Thank you. Good question. Um, actually on the ozone readings, the air quality is getting better. Uh, if you look at the numbers, the reason we recently went from into a serious classification was because they lowered the standard. They went from 75 parts per million to 70 parts per million. So actually the air quality is getting better in the area. We're in the area, unfortunately, that wraps around down through Denver. If you look at the air quality readings, most of the monitors that are out of compliance are not up here. They're down in Denver and they're typically over by the mountains. So one of the things that we have to look at is in Weld County, which again is part of that area, um, even with more oil and gas drilling, the air quality's gotten better. So I think when you look at those, we've done some good things, uh, but we can still look at trip reductions, work with some of the major companies, because we have to make adjustments to make attainment coming up. We have to have a plan for that and I think we can do that.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, same question now to Kristen.
Thank you. So I've been working on this issue. Um, I serve on the North Front Range Metropolitan Planning Organization. Um, we're responsible for not only transportation planning, but also air quality. And, you know, we are in serious non-compliance. Um, it's true that standards have gotten higher, but, um, you know, we sit, it, we sit in an environment where, you know, we have poor air quality and part of it is because it pushes up against our foothills. Some of, actually some of the worst readings are in Larimer County and there, there are some really bad readings in the western part of Larimer County, uh, because of that, that, because of that factor, because of that inversion factor. And so, you know, we, we have to pay attention to this. Air quality is huge. It's an environmental justice issue. It affects, um, people, often people who are poor and low income more. Um, you know, it's, it, we need to do the work. We need to hold, um, polluters accountable and make sure that we have a strong plan in conjunction with, uh, the Colorado Department of Health and Environment, uh, to take care of this issue because it's just really unacceptable, uh, situation in our community.
Thank you, Kristen. Uh, same question now to Ben.
So my dad was, is from Switzerland or was from Switzerland. And whenever we went on vacation there, you were ticketed pretty quickly if you didn't shut your vehicle off when you stopped at a stop sign or if there was any construction there. And, uh, I do it here because I kind, I had to get in the habit of it from just visiting Switzerland. And, uh, I think there are a lot of practical things that we can do, keep the mufflers, uh, you know, in good condition, the, the vehicles tuned. Obviously our emissions at the state do a lot of that. Some of this emission has come over from other countries in the high altitudes and we're actually having to pay for that, if you will, uh, in several ways. Our health and, uh, that's a concern. It's not, there's not a whole lot we can do with that. Um, so, uh, I'm not sure how much is really ours. I've not done that study. I've read a lot of data and there's a lot to read. So, uh, we need to look at that fairly, uh, to ourselves.
Thank you, Ben. Uh, same question now to Miles.
Thank you. This, this is a difficult issue because as Kristen said, we are severely non-compliant and yet we are impacted by so many other people in our region. I think one thing we could do is, um, do a better job in our transportation, our transit. We need, I think we need more buses throughout the county. We have silos of bus systems for Collins and Lublin, but we have no connectivity. And I think we could really reduce emissions by having more buses that can get out to, uh, other parts of the county. Jeff mentioned 95% of the people in Wellington commute out. Well, if they're driving to Fort Collins, maybe we need to get a, a bus system going there and we can't expect Fort Collins to pay. Wellington can't afford it, uh, but if we create partnerships, we'll have better results. In Windsor, we did a partnership with Fort Collins Greeley and, uh, Windsor on the Pooter Express Bus System goes from CSU to UNC. So we need more part, more partnerships like that and also encourage more electric vehicles throughout the county.
Thank you, Miles. Uh, same question now to Aislinn.
So most people come to Larimer County. I would assume stay here because of our clean water, our clean air, our recreation, the beautiful place that we live in, that we're not Denver, frankly. And so it is unfortunate and it is an issue to be, um, to focus on in regards to air quality. There are multiple factors and it's not just cooperating regionally with the municipalities, but it's also with the state level. Um, there are huge impacts from all over the state that affect that. There are also efficiencies. There are, there is technology that could be involved to help reduce those emissions. But what's important is they need to not just be sustainable in the environmental sense, but they need to be economically, uh, sustainable as well. And I think those two go hand in hand to get that cooperation. So it doesn't necessarily have to be mandates, but you can get these amazing businesses to, to help us with this effort.
Thank you, Aislinn. Uh, same question now to Jody.
Um, I have to agree with Kristen Stevens that we are, uh, really out of compliance with our air quality. And I think again, um, getting that air quality monitoring systems around the county and doing a public education, uh, awareness campaign so folks can understand how important this is and why and what their air quality is currently. A lot of individuals can't go outside during, uh, those high ozone days and I think it impacts the quality of life and we need to make sure how every, everyone understands how this, uh, their quality of life is impacted with poor air quality. Um, again, bringing stakeholders all to the table, businesses, nonprofit agencies, um, the municipalities, the, and then the regional planning organization. Um, that work is currently happening and I know they're doing a lot of work together trying to solve this issue. I think increasing multimodal, um, opportunities and, um, incentivizing that and to just get the public in general to understand how important it is to take ownership of this and do, everyone do their part to help, um, decrease those levels. Also, I think we've looked to agriculture and regenerative farming and the Noto and some of those things that carbon capture and help with those air qualities to, to capture those, um.
Thank you, Jody. And last for this question is Jeff.
Yes, thank you. Some of us have been around here long enough to remember the brown cloud in Denver, right? And we remember that that didn't go away overnight. It took a lot of work. But your question was about how do we work with the region? And how we work with the region is to make sure that our relationships are built, that the relationships with the folks in this region in Northern Colorado, but not only in Northern Colorado, in Southern Wyoming also. Do we reach out? Do we have those relationships? I've worked for years to develop those relationships. We can't be at a point where we're pointing fingers and saying, you're the problem or you're the problem. This is going to be a regional approach. It's going to be a Colorado approach. And we have to address it in that matter, knowing that it's not going to be fixed absolutely overnight, but it's a long-term re, re, piece of work that we need to continue to do. I believe we're headed in that direction. There's enough, there's a lot of, uh, awareness about it and we will continue to improve that.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, all right. Our next question, we've just got a handful more. You all are showing tremendous endurance, which is good because I've heard meetings of the county commissioners are also lengthy, although I hope when they're in person, there's a little more wiggling. So anyway, uh, our next question, uh, is about ethics and conflicts of interest. And we'll start this one with Kristen. Uh, we would like to know what criteria you would use to decide if you have a conflict of interest when a vote is going before the county commission that would require you to recuse yourself?
So it's really important, uh, to look at, you know, your ethics rule when you're making a decision. So every, every government entity has their own ethics, uh, rules that they have to, you know, abide by. And I mean, you know, one of the, the most basic ones is would you get financial gain from something that you're voting on? So is there a direct financial gain from that? And so that's one of the things that I would consider certainly. Or do, or does someone in your family get direct financial gain? I think that that's really important. Um, you know, I, ethics questions come up all the time. I, I think that sometimes they can be used, um, you know, as a tool to, uh, to make sure that people aren't voting on certain issues. Um, and so I, I hate for them to be used in that kind of way, but it is important for us to maintain our ethics. It is important to follow those rules to see if you have any financial or personal gain from any kind of issue. If you do, you should certainly recuse yourself.
Thank you, Kristen. Uh, next up on this question is Ben.
Yes, I listened to a lot of those situations where some of the planning commissioners had to recuse themselves and I put myself in their shoes many times and sitting through many of those meetings in the last few years that I've been attending. And, uh, I think it'd be very simple for me to be able to determine which, which, which ones I would need to be out of. Uh, I'm, I'm well placed on that and, uh, I understand that really well. And so I, I don't think that'd be a problem for me at all. Um, I think it's very obvious to me, in other words, when something might be, uh, unfair to the person or, or to something that I would, was about to make a decision on, so.
Thank you, Ben. Uh, same question now to Miles.
Thank you. That's a great question and it's of utmost importance, I think, when you're serving the community and you're, uh, you have the community and public trust. So eight years on the Windsor Town Board, I never had to recuse myself, but obviously if there was any business or financial interest, I would have. Um, I think the important and the gray area is always with campaign donations and where those come from and how that conflicts with the vote. So, um, I think that's an important issue we need to look at going forward, but I'm well aware of the ethics issues and conflict of interest issues and I would recuse myself for any business or financial interest.
Thank you, Miles. Uh, same question now to Aislinn.
Thank you. Not only did I come up face to face with these issues, being on, anybody who served in government is going to come up with these, face these issues, but I was also on the ethics committee for the city of Fort Collins and so reviewed these for other people as well. And yeah, it's the obvious, you know, financial benefit for myself or my family. There are some benefits that could be seen or perceived perhaps i- in other ways that aren't necessarily monetary. And I think that it's important that, uh, people elect your next officials who have integrity and have proven that to you. And I think that's really important, number one. And number two, there's often the perceived perception of a conflict. And I think that it's really important for the government in general on any level, uh, but I commit to that myself, that you have transparency. So there, there is a perceived conflict, that you're communicating that directly and you're not trying to hide anything. And I think that that's really important. And for myself, when I was on the council, I made sure to steer clear from anything that could be perceived that way. But that's a great question.
Thank you, Aislinn. Uh, same question now to Jody.
Um, I, I think at this time and age, um, firstly with the time of COVID going forward and folks needing services, we have to be really careful to have that public trust and that integrity and ethics are, are very important for folks to have, uh, confidence going forward with their government and elected officials. I think, uh, you know, any financial gain, um, but also social capital can, uh, perceive, um, a personal gain from that is also something to take into account. I think as I, as Aislinn had said, any perceived, um, influence or gain from that or any perceived conflict of interest should be taken into account. I think, uh, as elected, you should be very aware of the laws of ethics and, and maybe having even a course on ethics and, and conflicts of interest, just making sure you understand, uh, each office and how important that is to maintain that public trust. And I think it's important to recuse yourself, even if there is even a perceived conflict of interest and that comes in many different ways. And I think we have to be very conscious of that as, as being public officials.
Okay, thank you, Jody. Uh, same question now to Jeff.
You bet. Conflict of interest i- is one of those things that gets thrown out, uh, all the time. And, and I've lived in this county 46 years and I know a lot of people. And just because I went to high school with someone or I know somebody does not mean I have a conflict of interest. Uh, one of the very first trainings that we went through when I joined the, the planning commission 10 years ago was Jeannie Hag came in, our county attorney. And we talked extensively about what that looks like in a public role. And we've had those refreshers throughout the 10 years that we've been there. We have these conversations on a regular basis within our, within our commission because many of, many of us that are on that commission have lived here for a very long time. I've run my organizations and I demand that they go through what I call MEL. Is it moral? Is it ethical? And is it legal? If you can run what you're working on through that filter, what I call my MEL filter, then you can move forward. I have used that for years and continue to do that personally and professionally.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, and I think, did we all? No, one more. Uh, Bob, your turn to answer that one.
Great.
Almost skipped you.
Almost, almost. Uh, good question. Um, when I was on the city council, the question came up. And one of the problems is if you're active in the community, which why I was, I was in a business, there's a lot of issues in front of the city council that affect businesses. And the criteria was how large of a group are you part of? There's a difference between if you're part of a group of five, they're affected by legislation or in my case, it was a group of 300 businesses. Well, I thought at 300, um, that's a pretty substantial class, uh, to be affected by it. In the end, I conflicted out. But one of the things when you're actually in the seat, you have to think about is you're elected by a group of people in the community to represent them on every issue that comes up. So if you conflict out too easily or too often, you're really not giving them the representation they deserve and that's why they elected you. So there's a trade-off there I had to look at for a period of time. Finally conflicted out, um, I thought it was the smart thing to do.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, so I'd like to ask a follow-up question to this. We talked at the beginning how you would, um, try to make county business as transparent, uh, and accessible to people as possible. Um, oftentimes the most vocal voices in county politics and decision-making, uh, are the, the most well-organized, the most engaged. Um, and those voices may or may not represent the views of the, the broad voter base. Um, I want to hear how you would, uh, hear, acknowledge and empower, uh, voices that are often unheard in county politics and decision-making. And we are going to start with Ben.
Okay, yeah, I just actually heard one of those today as an example. Some people that, there were about 2,000 people that tried to stop a purchase of land and it was not accomplished. I think more of the getting the folks together and let them hear and mediate and try to keep people peaceful will be an art, is an art form. I'm quite an ambassador and I'm very diplomatic and I'm good with people, but you have to have someone there to keep them and the passions under control because they do all need to be heard. I mean, sometimes the three-minute deal that oftentimes is given in these hearings is not enough. Sometimes there's not enough time. Now, some of these issues have gone on for quite a while. I understand that. But I think it takes as long as it takes to make sure that everyone has been heard and everyone really gets as close as they can to be to that happy place, that we get the majority of them to that happy place, so.
Thank you, Ben. Same question now to Miles.
Thank you. I think it's important to listen to everyone and that's the job of elected officials to listen and if it means 100 people coming up to speak, I think that's, that's our job. And communication, collaboration and partnerships are all part of this solution. In Windsor, I've, I've actually called folks that disagreed with my vote. I called them on the way home from our council meeting. It's not easy, but it's important that they know that I hear them, I listen to them and I consider their opinion. So I think open mind, open ears and communication are key.
Thank you, Miles. Same question now to Aislinn.
I think this is a great question because the beauty of local government and frankly, my interest is that so much of it is nonpartisan, right? Water affects everybody, roads affect everybody. There's really so much that there's not a clear line, dry in the sand and, and less room for ideologues. And so I, I think the other really important piece, aside from reaching out and yes, of course it is our job to listen to every single citizen and frankly, represent every single citizen, but it's being an active part of your community and not a small select group. I mean, from being on the board of my kid's school, but in healthcare, I interact with anybody. It, it doesn't matter your socioeconomic level, it doesn't matter who you are, where you come from, what your background is, everybody needs that. And it's such a beautiful opportunity to interact with people who maybe wouldn't be in this one circle of people. And I think that being able to filter too through the frustrations and the anger and being able to listen. I mean, most people just want to be heard. And in addition to that is asking them, what is a solution that you have to offer?
Okay. Thank you, Aislinn. Same question now to Jody.
Of course, we, of course, thank you for that question. I think we always listen to our, every single constituent and you try to build those relationships and trust beforehand. So when you do listen, you have that rapport that they, they can know, they can talk to you and express their, their concerns or their questions. I think besides, you know, we have folks come up and be able to speak for three minutes. I think we have to provide opportunities for community conversations beforehand, especially if the issues we know are coming up on the horizon. I have, my daughter and I started In a Generational Project a couple of years ago with the CHU Center for Public Deliberation and I have been participating in some of those other conversations. And it's really great to have really tough, complex issues brought before those groups and have a moderated discussion with groups that come from different perspectives and, and really have that interesting dialogue to, to have folks discuss hard questions and then find common ground together. I think going forward, we have to look at not only our differences, but our common ground and listen to each other and find how we can work to these problems together going forward. I think that's a good way to start.
Thank you, Jody. Same question now to Jeff.
Again, what, please repeat that question for me. I just want to make clear what you're asking. You're muted, Carrie.
Thank you. So thinking back to ethics and influence and who you represent, I'd like to know, aside from the frequent flyers and people who are heavily engaged, heavily organized and often participating in county politics, how would you make sure you can hear, acknowledge and empower and amplify the voices of people who often go unheard?
Well, you're absolutely right. You know, we, we, we see the same people over and over and over again at the hearings and that doesn't diminish their, their voice or anything else. As a public official, when you put yourself out in front, you have to make yourself available. My mother-in-law used to complain about going to the grocery store with us because it always took us an hour and a half to get through the grocery store because somebody that I would know, somebody that had an issue, somebody that saw or knew what was going on would absolutely stop me and we'd have a 20, 30-minute conversation about that. We have to be approachable. We have to be available. You've seen my studio here. I want to make sure that people can get to me. They have my, my, my cellphone. There are times in the middle of a meeting that my cellphone will actually get a text from somebody saying, "This is my opinion." And that's going to be really, really critical in order to be transparent. I'm available. I'm in my, I'm in our public and people know, know me and know where I'm at.
Thank you, Jeff. Now to Bob.
Thank you. As we've talked about before, transparency and engagement are very important. Short story, when I was on the Fort Collins City Council, we had done a new east side plan. And as the city has done a great job of always reaching out, having the meetings, publicizing, did a great job. Came to us, about 30 people came down to speak and to a person, each one said they didn't like the plan. We'd ask each of them, "Did you know that we were having meetings?" "Yes." "Did you go to the meetings?" "No." So at that point, we had to go back to the drawing board and do the work again. So having the meetings isn't enough. When I see different meetings around the county, that's not enough unless you have a meaningful engagement, when the people will come and actually give you their ideas. So those people that won't tend to talk in a big group, these are the people you need to reach out in a meaningful way and make sure and get them engaged.
Thank you, Bob. Same question now to Kristen.
Thank you. So, you know, it's, it's clear to me that we aren't engaging everyone in our community, that there are voices that go unheard and we do often hear from the same folks every, every week. We're working, doing this work at, at city council right now to kind of make sure that we are doing better outreach, that we are diversifying our boards and commissions. So it's, those aren't the same folks that have been on for 10 and 20 years and that we're hearing from people that might not normally participate because it can be intimidating for folks. And, you know, one of the, one of the things that we can really do is, is figure out what the barriers are for participation. So is it childcare? Is it language? Is it uncomfortable with the situation? We really need to research that before we can figure out how to engage better. So, you know, there again, not having a meeting at 10 o'clock on a Tuesday might be, you know, one of those ways that we can get to more, get more folks involved. But this is a big issue and we, we really need to tackle it and it's a big county. We need to hear from all the voices and it's, it's no longer acceptable to just hear from a few.
Thank you, Kristen. We've got just a couple more questions. I'm not going to change your timing, but it'll just encourage you to be as brief in these last few as possible. Thinking about the idea of expanding the board from three to five members, I know folks have maybe addressed this on the Vote 411 platform, but we'd love to hear just generally, would you be in favor of expanding to a five-member board? Why or why not? And we're going to start this one with Miles.
Yes, I would highly support expanding our board to five members. We have a huge county, land and people, diverse, and we need more representation on our board. So I would highly encourage it. Every city council, every county around us has more people with more voices. So I would highly encourage going to five county commissioners.
Thank you, Miles. Same question to Aislinn.
So I don't have enough information on a proposal about five county commissioners to say yes or no. I have to say that a proposal that came forward, and of course, I should consider anything that came forward, but it should consider, yeah, vast representation, but how are those people elected? Because we don't want to get into a situation where smaller communities are not being heard and not given a vote with, or a voice with their vote. The other aspect is we're sitting here talking about budget cuts for half the night and then we're talking about adding, you know, pretty expensive costs with adding additional commissioners and the benefits that come with that. So I'd consider one, but I have a lot of questions.
Thank you, Aislinn. Same question now to Jody.
I've had this, I've had this conversation a lot with folks the last year across the county, especially up in the rural and mountainous regions where sometimes they don't feel they have access or, or listen to or have connections with their elected commissioners. And I think I would be open to that proposal, especially if the public really wanted to see that happen. I do think that we do have to look at those details and see how that would, how that would be districted and how those elections would happen. And, and also the, those logistical barriers of that, of those elected officials living an hour and a half from the county seat. How would we address some of those challenges with meetings and, and folks commuting and things like that? There's lots of things to consider, but I definitely would be open to increasing the number of commissioners.
Thank you, Jody. Same question now to Jeff.
I do not support extend, expanding the board of county commissioners. I, I believe the desire to do that could really be a misunderstanding of what the role of the county commissioner is. We do not, we are not administrators of county departments. We hire two officials. We hire our county manager and we hire our county attorney. We are liaisons to our boards and commissions and we bring those, add information back to the other county commissioners. Like Aislinn said, at that expense at this time and in this, in this environment, would, would just not add anything to the representation. County commissioners are elected countywide and represent countywide and that is really critical. Adding to more to that, I do not think actually improves that. If we think because we've just grown, then we have to consider if it makes sense to do that and why we still only have two state senators.
Thank you, Jeff. Same question now to Bob.
Thank you. I'm not in support of, of changing from three to five. Realizing that all the county commissioners now are elected by everybody in the county, they're accountable to everybody in the county already. When we've talked about the numbers, if you had two more commissioners, that would roughly add over $250,000 a year to the budget. That's a lot of money. And I think what we found is that the way it is now, because you're elected by everybody in the county, you're accountable to everybody. I've seen in some city councils and other counties, when you get larger, you become like neighborhoods and you're responding to your region. We need to have people that have the bigger view to look out throughout the overall county and respond that way. So I'm not supportive of it.
Thank you, Bob. Same question now to Kristen.
Sure. You know, I'd be open to the conversation. I think, like Jody said, I think there's people in the county who are questioning why we're such a large county and only have three commissioners. I'm not wedded to the idea necessarily. I do think it would provide some diversity and some diversity of opinion. I think for a long time, our county commission has looked very much the same. And, you know, I think it would open us up to maybe some new ideas and some innovation that maybe hasn't been considered before. And so I think for that reason, it, it's interesting to explore it and certainly I think that's a case where we would need to do outreach and make sure it's a wise decision. I, I hear the, I hear the calls for more fiscal responsibility and, and worrying about the additional costs. And so that, you know, I mean, that's something where you weigh, you know, the benefits and the risks and, and would have to parse that out. But I certainly would be open to having the discussions countywide.
Thank you, Kristen. And last for this question, go ahead, Ben.
Thank you. Yes, I get, I understand that perhaps some folks, people, they may feel that they're shorted on time with the commissioner's attention. I don't know how true that is. I've not downright asked either one of the three if they feel they can keep up with the demands of the people and the citizens, constituents of this county. But not only is it the increase that Bob actually spoke of, but how about the extra offices and the vehicle per diems and whatever other things are, I don't even know what they are. I haven't looked at it that closely. But I certainly would not be looking at this for some time yet in light of the COVID's effects on us. So our budget would certainly be, it's already strained as it is and we're already looking and thinking about other things that we don't necessarily need, other than the health and safety of the people, of course. That's the priority. So I would not be supportive of that increase of commissioners either.
Thank you, Ben. All right, we've got one last question and then we, after our last question, then we'll do closing statements. So thinking about your key goals, if you were elected, what goals would you like to accomplish during your term? And what challenges do you foresee in order to attain those goals? So again, what are the key goals you would like to accomplish during your term and what challenges do you foresee in order to attain those goals? And we are starting now with Aislinn.
Thank you. I have to say, our county commissioners have done a pretty amazing job over the last decades. They've maintained a high level of reserves that helped us to pay for our floods and fires with cash, to outreach to the city of Loveland and provide a building and services there in Loveland that they were able to pay for in cash. And of course, that's in cooperation with the county treasurer and other county elected officials. But I think that, you know, a big goal to walk in and say, "I have a whole bunch of things to change" is, is not necessarily the case. I think there's a lot to stay the same. I think there's always room for improvement in outreach and communication and diverse perspectives that could come. And in addition to that, probably about maybe 10, 15 years ago, there was a lot more regional cooperation in regards to the economy with the Northern Colorado Economic Development Commission and that no longer really exists. And I think there's a lot of opportunity to bring all of the communities together.
Thank you, Aislinn. Same question now to Jody. Key goals and what challenges you foresee?
Well, I think, again, you know, look at the realities that we're facing right now with the pandemic and the subsequent economic crisis. We have, some of my goals have shifted a little bit because we're going to have to really focus and work together as a region and partner with businesses, municipalities, nonprofits, organizations as we recover and become more resilient through this crisis. And that's going to be looking at mental health as the goal of mine and, and helping us get our entire community and our whole county through this crisis and being stronger for it. Also, I think, you know, there is, during this time, it's an opportunity for us to look at fighting for clean air and clean water and look for innovative ways to solve this attainable housing crisis we have also in this county. We're growing and we are going to need to look at this going forward, how we can manage that growth. And we're going to need everybody at the table to discuss that going forward. And so the challenges are the economic shortfall, how we ride out the second wave of this pandemic and how we go forward together.
Thank you, Jody. Same question to you now, Jeff.
There's going to be some challenges in what we prioritize when we come into office. You know, obviously, we've got a behavioral health center we need to get open. We've got a landfill we need to get open. But one of the things that I found in business, in my 35 years of, of operating businesses, building them, fixing them, is that when things are slow, when economies turn, those are the times to really get in and look at all policies and procedures and really examine the efficiencies that can be improved upon. And I think it's going to be critical that we do that as an organization. Our organization of about 1,800 people that have been incredibly innovative over time, we are going to have to ask them to be incredibly innovative again. It's going to be difficult to keep this organization together. It's going to be difficult to replace some of them that will leave in the midst of this. Those things as a, from a businessman standpoint and from a human standpoint, absolutely need to be top of mind as we move in.
Thank you, Jeff. Same question now to Bob.
Thank you. Obviously, before the, the pandemic came into Limerick County, we would have had different goals, different things we want to achieve in the next two to four years. That's kind of hard to look at those now when we have to face reality. We have to finish off the first round, maybe have a second round of the virus we have to deal with more effectively. We have to start creating more primary jobs for the long run. So in the short run, I think we have to deal with our finances. We have to get, get things in shape, look at priorities, and at that point, look at some goals down the road. I would love to see more primary jobs, which also affect our transportation issues, air quality issues, affordability issues. A lot of things are rolled into that we can work on. First thing we need to do is prioritize, look at the budget when we have real numbers. And once we think that we have the virus and done for the first go-around, it's unclear for the next year what that's going to look like.
Thank you, Bob. Same question now to Kristen.
Thank you. So, you know, I, I do think that the environment of COVID has really changed this, what people's answers might be. For me, you know, I, I always knew that there were folks in our community that were struggling and really needed some help kind of getting on their feet and getting back to work. And so I, one of the things I'd like to prioritize is something that's referred to as resilience hubs, which are places around the county where people could access, access programs that are delivered by the county. So they could access SNAP benefits there, they could get workforce training there, they could get, you know, help with, you know, childcare assistance and, and really kind of a one-stop shop for county services. I think that would help people get back on their feet. I think we needed it before and I think we need it especially after the pandemic has hit. I also think we need to pay attention to our environment. Clearly, challenges will be financial challenges. we need to pay attention to our environment. Clearly, challenges will be financial challenges, but I think we can overcome those. We do have good reserves. We can use some funding from the federal government, and we will get back on our feet.
Thank you, Kristen. Same question now to Ben.
Okay, thank you. Of course, I don't know, I hope our businesses will be ramped up pretty far along before those of us take our seats, because that will be about, what, the second week of January. So we've got a little ways to go here. My hope is that we're well underway to 100% ramp up on our businesses. But if not, that would be one of my goals, is to make sure that happens. And of course, while we're keeping a close watch on this supposed possibility, the possibility of the second wave, which I hope, you know, and pray that doesn't happen again to any large extent, if it does. Also then, I would also like to soften the cost of startups. You know, we've seen, I've seen too many brick-and-mortars and ma'ams leave already before the COVID hit. There were already folks talking about leaving before the COVID hit. I'm trying to talk them off the ledge and keep them here and stay in there. But we've got to make it more affordable to not only run a business that's existing, but for the folks that have a passion to start a new business, and they don't get snuffed by the fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. And now Miles.
Thank you. My goals have not changed. Affordable housing spread throughout the region, and a better transportation and transit system spread throughout the county. Now, obviously, we have new challenges, the economic challenges to achieve. These are going to be really difficult. As people mentioned, we're going to need partnerships with other communities, state and federal organizations, nonprofits. We're all going to have to work together. It's going to be difficult. But over the next four years, if we can expand affordable housing, workforce housing, where those new businesses that come here have a strong workforce that already lives here, that's going to be important to help our economy. And having transportation for people to get to and from work with these new jobs coming, that's going to be important as well. So two goals, affordable housing and transit, those are four-year goals, and the challenges are obviously going to be budget challenges. So partnerships will be important.
Thank you, Miles. All right, we're going to go ahead and move into closing statements now. You have one minute. And we're going to go in reverse order. So if you've been keeping track of who was ahead of you, flip it and think about who you spoke after previously. So we'll begin with Jody, closing statement.
Thank you so much. Thanks again to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and to all the candidates for participating. You know, Larimer County comprises over 3,600 square miles and has a unique tapestry of over 360,000 individuals, trends of individuals that together make a strong, resilient community. Together, we can ride through the challenges before us. I've seen those people already reach and be innovative and reach those challenges that are happening today to us. We can reach and attain a healthy and prosperous future together. And together, we can beat those challenges that are looming in front of us. We need a leader who can bring those threads together and the resources together for the benefit of all. We need strong county leadership, and we need a strong and true and tested County Commissioner who will work with the whole county. My experience and background in healthcare, emergency services, small acreage, agriculture, behavioral health, aging issues, resources, public education, and environmental protections makes me the best candidate going forward for the county commissioner. I'm proud of all the endorsements, including Commissioner John Paulus. I beg you for consideration. Please contact me at any time that I still remember on my website. Thank you again. I'm Jody Shigley-McDally, running for County Commissioner for District Three.
Thank you, Jody. Continuing backwards, Aislinn, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Yes, thank you to the League of Women Voters, but I'm grateful for the opportunity to hear directly from the citizens and these questions. And while I told you my perspective and my thoughts and what I'm hearing, I'd really love to hear more, and ultimately, that's my job. I have the necessary experience, and as we know all too well, it is so important that we are electing a county commissioner who can start this job on day one, and not just start this job on day one, but lead. But it's more about us together as a community. We are all Larimer County. We are the best of Colorado. And I am Aislinn Cotwiss. I am running for Larimer County Commissioner in District Three, and I am humbly asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Aislinn. Miles, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters and the city of Fort Collins. During these uncertain times, we need experienced leadership, and I have the most elected experience and 25 years of budget experience. I have kids in school still, keeps me rooted to the community. I think we need someone that can step in on day one, and that's going to be me, Miles Baker, www.milesforlarimer.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Miles, and to Ben.
Thank you. Yes, I bring 38 years of business experience. I am not a politician. I am representing the people, and I am eager to do that, to serve. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, City of Fort Collins, and it's really great that everybody showed up, all the candidates. It was wonderful to hear from everyone. And I just have to say that the 32 years of county experience will serve me well and serve this county well. I do listen well. I want to hear from everyone as well. Whatever your concerns are, I'm a quick responder. I respond quickly to any phone calls, and I do my best to remedy and come up with the best, happiest place that everyone can be in. And Ben Asta, running for Larimer County Commissioner, District Three, vote the number four, asta, A-S-T-E, dot com. And I'd love to hear from you, 786-0308. Thank you so much again for having us.
Thank you, Ben. And Kristen, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I think the best, happiest place to be in is Larimer County, and I've loved living here for the past 30 years. I love raising my family here. And I'm really committed to this, to our county and to our region, to problem-solving and to make sure that we have a better future. So I have a lot of experience. I've served on Fort Collins City Council for five years. I've done a lot of transportation work regionally with the North Front Range Metropolitan Planning Organization. I have leadership experience by chairing the Pooter Fire Authority and being mayor pro tem. And I really want to serve our county and make sure that our best days are ahead of us. So we are living on uncertain times, but we can get through this. I'm confident that of the resiliency and the innovation of the people of Larimer County, I have enjoyed living so much in this county and want to serve you. If you want more information about my campaign, it's kristinforlarimer.com. I ask for your vote. I hope that we have discussions in the future about what your vision for the county is. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you. Having been in business in Larimer County for over 30 years, I have created jobs and met a payroll. I have served my community by being on the Fort Collins City Council, chairman of the Pooter Fire Authority, board member of the Fort Collins Rotary Club, and board member of the Veterans Plaza. I represented Northern Colorado and the Colorado House of Representatives, while championing work on economic development to improve opportunities in Larimer County for residents to have better jobs. Now, more than ever, we need to elect someone who has the right experience to help Larimer County move forward. I want to thank the League for putting this on tonight, and I ask for your vote, Bob McCleskey, District Two. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And Jeff, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Again, thank you, Kelly and Carson and Ann back there behind the curtains. I appreciate your work on this. Budget process begins now, and I'm involved. I've been involved in the budget for the last three years. So yes, it's important to have a commissioner that can sit down and go to work day one, but someone who can sit down and go to work 10 years ago, as I have done, and have spent the last 10 years being mentored and learning from and going hundreds and hundreds of meetings and building relationships around the Northern Colorado region. That's the person that you want to sit in the next county commissioner, District Two seat. You can contact me at jensenforlcc.com. That's J-E-N-S-E-N-for-L-C-C.com. My phone numbers are on there. We have lots of community meetings. Check our Facebook page. Check our website. I want to talk to you, but know that Jeff Jensen for County Commissioner, District Two, is already working for you.
Thank you, Jeff. In a live forum, this was when I would invite the audience to applaud and thank you for a well-done event. It's kind of anticlimactic, just us on our Zoom screens now, but I do want to appreciate all of you for the thoughtful participation tonight and for helping us delve into these issues, and also your willingness to run for public office in these challenging times. Ballots for the primary election will be mailed out on the week of June 8, and those must be returned no later than June 30 to be counted. For more information about the primary election, including more information from these candidates, we encourage voters to visit the website, vote411.org. And Larimer County election information, including links to register to vote or update your registration, is at votelarimer.org. Thank you so much to all of our candidates, to the League of Women Voters volunteers, and all the talented staff from the city of Fort Collins for making tonight possible. Good night, everybody.